Hello.
Oh.
You can hear me?
Yes.
You can see me too?
Hmm. Behind something, but.
What's that?
Yes, I can see you.
Okay.
Other side.
Thank you very much. I don't know what that means, but that's okay. Cindy, what is there? Isn't there a button I can push so I can see everybody else that's on to?
On the top right-hand corner of your screen, there should be a little thing that looks like a box in view.
Okay. Then what?
And then you click gallery view.
Okay, it's not showing for me. So all right, that's all right.
Maybe on yours, it's on the top, a thing that's view.
Could it? It's could something be on the bottom instead?
It could be on the bottom.
Oh, now I can see you. I can see Kabaziak and Jimbo. Can you see me, Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I see who talks. That's how I see it.
Well, it's amazing. Like you know. See, mine was on the bottom. Okay, gotcha.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, it is seven o'clock. I've let everybody in out of the waiting room and as more come in, I will continue to admit them.
Okay. All right, so at that. That information, it is seven o'clock and I would like to call the meeting to order by starting with the number one thing on our agenda to have you do a roll call, Cindy.
Bob.
Here.
Here, Sagatuck, Michigan, Allegan County.
Oh, yeah, you have to say that.
Okay.
Um, Ludlow.
Here, Sagatuck, Michigan, Allegan County.
Muir.
Present, Sagatuck City, Allegan County.
Hundraiser. Hundraiser. We'll come back to him. We might find him. Um, and Zurfus.
Here, Sagatuck City, Michigan, Allegan County.
And Kabaziak.
Here, Sagatuck City, Allegan County, Michigan.
Mr. Hundraiser, are you on the phone?
Nothing on Jim, Hundraiser?
Nothing on him. I will continue to admit people as they join.
Okay, all right, so you don't try. Um, all right, thank you, Cindy. At this point in time, we'll go on to agenda changes. Does anybody on the board have any changes to tonight's proposed agenda as presented?
I see none, Bob, so I'll make a motion to we accept the agenda as presented.
All right.
Jimbo, I'll second.
Okay, and then Cindy, I think we need to do a vote on that, correct?
Every time. So let's go with, um, Bob.
Present, yes.
Baugh.
Yes.
Muir.
Yes.
Ludlow.
Yes.
Kabasiak.
Yes.
And Zurfus.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, agenda is as submitted. Item number three, approval of minutes there. We actually have none. We're requesting a continuation of the minutes from the 17th and the 22nd as as set. So I guess we will continue those on throughout the continuation of that application. Is that right, Cindy?
That's fine.
Okay. Uh, you need any kind of motion on that or anything? Vote?
No.
Those? Okay. Uh, that moves us into our item number four on the on our agenda, which is new business. And we have a request, an application for 184 Park Street front yard setback from Vine Street. And that's requiring a public hearing. So in order to start that, I'd like to have the call the hearing to order and have the zoning administrators give us a summary of the applicant and what the request is.
I can do that. This property that is located on 184 Park Street has been before you, I think, three previous times. First, when the owner, Mr. Chini, came in and requested zero setbacks without very many details. He since then hired Mr. Carlson to prepare a more detailed application, which he did, and you approved quite some time ago, I think. Let me see if I have that here. Um. That you approve that much later.
2016. I see something September 8, 2016, Cindy?
Yes, that's correct. And then because of health issues, Mr. Chini did not build on that property. So he sold it to another person who then came before you once again, and that was in 2008. Um, that and you were able to approve his variance request as well. So that person, for some reason, and we don't know exactly why, decided not to build. And the buyer, Ms. Gleene, hired Mr. Chuck Carlson to redraw and resubmit the application. And it is almost identical to the one that you approved in 2016.
Pretty much the same setback. It is the same setback from Vine Street, if I recall. That's correct, yeah. Okay. Um. At this time, is there someone present that would like to make a presentation for the applicant and provide information on the request? Anybody raise their hands, Cindy, at all that you see or?
I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Okay. Well, I'll ask again if there is someone at this time that representing the applicant that wants to speak up and over give an overview of the application and the request.
I see Mr. Carlson has his hand raised.
Okay.
Chuck, you're muted.
Okay.
That's better.
All right, I didn't know. I didn't know if that had control of the new button or you did. Um, so yeah, as Cindy mentioned, this application, I mean, I, we just used the same drawings that we did for Mr. Tini back in 2016. The only thing that's really changed, and I think it's a good plus, is that Mr. Tini wanted a 3,000 square feet on on one floor and we're reducing the footprint substantially. I mean, it's they only want, they want a lot smaller house, more of a cottage feel. So that that's what we've been working on. You know, it's gonna be a smaller house. We got permission from Eagle back then, which is now, or it was the DEQ back then. It's the Eagle now, so that permit is still active. But once we get approval from you guys, we're gonna resubmit to them to show them that we are actually doing a smaller building footprint. Um. Other than that, I think, you know, the reason why we did go for a variance from from the very get-go is because this is a very hilly site and the Eagle had had, you can't build on anything that's more than a 33% slope, which makes this lot almost unbuildable or accessible. So that's why we asked for the the variance along Vine Street is so that we can so we can get a footprint, reasonable footprint on the on the property. Back in 2016, John Beha asked to ask us to show drawings of any way we could fill fit footprint on the property without getting the variance, and that was almost impossible to do.
Very sorry, Charles.
Uh, that's for you.
Okay. First of all, I think that the plans look look pretty very nice and complete. Even though you'd you'd been through this property before, but there's more information than we even had prior, I think, from what I recall, so. Some nice views. We may have some questions when we come back for you on and some of the views or anything like that, so. We'll go through our, we'll go to our public comments and any letters or anything here that has been provided and go ahead.
One more comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So for this application, if you take a look at the the perspectives that we've done, um, the the, we just kind of did that real quick just to get a footprint in front of you guys, but we're actually working on currently reducing the scale of the house. So that, I mean, they wanna, they wanna a cottage looking house and, you know, without getting too far in a design, we did these drawings real quick, but I can show you where we are going if you want to with with the design. But I just want to, I just want guys to know that we're we're actually, as far as the height and and the the roof line and everything, we're working to reduce that scale. Not necessarily the footprint, but the elevations, we're working to reduce the scale of that as well.
And at this time, if I recall, Charles, you can answer this or Cindy both, but you're either you're heightened, you're not, you're within our ordinance for the height requirements, right?
Right.
So, okay, it could be less than what you're showing, but.
Yes. It showed 21, four, correct?
To the center?
Oh, yes, to the center of the roof line, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, this is what we're showing you meets the code, meets code.
Yeah, okay, and it may may come down with what you're saying.
Right, yes, yeah, we're, yeah, I can show you some new drawings if you want. You know, but yeah, this all complies with what with 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 the height limitations. And yeah, we're coming down, so I'm gonna meet myself now.
Okay, thank you.
Again, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question for Chuck before you. Since it is a smaller cottage type, there you're still not, you're still requesting the same variance, a 10-foot variance yet? Or could that be possibly left?
Uh. Why don't? Well, why don't we, how about if we hold that deck for our our own deliberation, come back to come back to Chuck on that, Charles on that? And and we'll go through and see if there's any other comments or letters that we need to go through and public. Anyone who wants to speak for the public, we'll go to that first and then get back into it if they don't mind, I think.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So at this point in time, public comments, would like to know if there's any participant, anybody would like to make any comments in favor of the application that we're looking at for 184 Park Street?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Gary?
Uh, Gary Medler. Vine Street, Vine Street. Um, since the last variance was granted, there's been a substantial change to the city code where they reduced the minimum square footage of a home to 690 square feet. And applying the standards for this type of variance, you can place a 690-square-foot home somewhere on that property without having to obtain a variance. And so I think you need to take that in consideration. The other factor is between the pavement of Vine Street on the south side. There's a small strip of land that isn't owned by the city and isn't part of the property owner's property. It's part of Vine Street cottages. And so I wanted to point that out so that you don't permit, if you grant the variance, which probably shouldn't be because of the square foot reduction, but you you shouldn't be permitting this property owner to attach some sort of driveway off of Vine Street to the property on Park, because the entrance to that property is off of Park, not Vine. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, anyone else that would like to speak? For or against the applicant again for 184 Park Street? You can raise your hand or may possibly speak up either way. See anybody, Cindy, out there?
I do not see any raised hands.
Okay. Do we have any written correspondence for this application, either for or against?
Done.
Done? No written. Okay. All right, I'll give it one more time if there's anybody else. And then if nothing, nobody's raising a hand, we'll move on to our into our meeting with our deliberation to discuss the application. Is there nothing right now?
I don't see any raised hands, sir.
All right. Okay. So we've gone through our supporting and opposing comments, letters or or any opositions. So at that point in time, we would like to go close a portion of the public portion of the into our deliberation and go into discussion amongst those board members. And we can start with, is there anyone, any one of you who have any first comments that you want to make about the setback and what's been presented on the drawings and this almost a continuation of a variance, but it is a change of ownership, so go ahead.
This is, this is Jim Baugh, I do. I guess it's a question for Cindy. The driveway is awfully close to Vine Street in an already congested area. Are they required to get a driveway permit and would that come from Allegan County?
No, they're not required to get a driveway permit from Allegan County.
Why not?
Because we're a city and we take care of our own streets. The streets in the city are not part of Allegan County Road Commission responsibility.
Okay, and is this driveway approved, the location and the size and?
It meets the requirements of our zoning ordinance.
Do we have ordinances for driveways?
We do.
And what are those?
They are, let me take a peek here. Make a write-up property line. They have to have minimum specifications for thickness at the sidewalk or at the apron. And they cannot be more than 25 feet wide at the curb. Or what would be the curb if there was a curb?
And there's no requirement for site distance or?
No. The fire department does get to look at them and make sure they meet the standards for the fire department. But that's pretty much the basic requirements for parking for driveways is the specifications on the sidewalk and the apron and fire department review.
Okay, and what's what, please, what's the specification number for the driveways?
I mean, the thickness. The thickness of the concrete is six inches.
All those things that you just quoted, which which ordinance do they come from, 154 Watt?
I'm still looking for it. Oh. It comes from the section on streets and sidewalks. It's not part of zoning ordinance. Zoning ordinance only regulates the location and in residential property, there is no setback requirement. Traffic code. It's chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinance. It's not part of the zoning ordinance. So it's chapter 96.
Okay, thank you. So the fire department will review that. Well, they're just making sure they can get a fire truck in there.
Right.
Okay, all right. I'm satisfied, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Have any comments that would like to bring up about any questions you may have? Or for the architect or amongst ourselves here that taking a look at this, we've I can see that the, you know, the area is is relatively the same look, is like the same location as the architect referenced in the, because of the Eagle setting. Comment by by one of the you know, public comments was the reduction in the size of the house a little bit or in in the square footage. The I imagine the setback or the setback requirement that is required over there is is still an issue with the the slope for Eagle and I guess I think it's pretty important for their process from what Charles Carlson said that they go through our process and then go back to Eagle, so.
Bob, I have no, I have, this is Bob, I have no problem. I was just curious. Looking at, I have no problem with the 10-foot variance unless, you know, he was proposing or the client was proposing a smaller house that could be still moved. Now, we still have that slope, so even if that was the case, now you're still gonna need a 10-foot variance. I think, I guess. I'm looking at it.
Yeah, probably pushes it to the north, I guess, a little bit, but.
Yeah, it does. So the thing is, rather than 10-foot, it's an eight-foot. I'm not quarreling over a foot or two, but just curious to see if if Chuck has a design on that where if it's a little bit less, you know, we would like to have, you know, a little bit lesser variance, but we've granted it before twice. And I see no problem with a third time.
Um, I'll reach out, Charles, you're out there. Is there any anything that you would, to ask you to to respond to our question just as far as reduction in size of the house a little bit as to the change, any change in setting? You, I know that there is a slope and everything to deal with. Is there any comments you have on that?
Right, uh, yeah, I mean, the, we, we have reduced the footprint that was that the the Eagle granted us, so we're still in this, within the same footprint that they gave us back in 2000, that they would allowed us to do back in 2016. What we're doing is we're still in that same footprint that they that that we got approval for. What we're doing is we're we're keeping the northeast and west end of the house where 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 it was granted. So the front is is moving further away from Vine, but that that 22 feet on the west side of the house, that line is staying there. That width right there, so the 54 feet along the north side is what's getting shorter.
Okay, so you kept that same
Right.
north to south, well, north to south on the west side, or so to speak, or
Right.
on the east and west side.
Right. And then and then the 30 feet on the east side is staying the same width. It's just it that that whole line of the house is getting pushed to the west there, so we're further from Vine Street.
And driveway wise, there were some comments on driveway. Did you have any any thoughts on that?
Well, the driveway is kind of designed to to go where it kind of makes sense for the topography. I mean, we're gonna have it, it's gonna have to slope up and we're gonna have to do a lot of fill there to get it up to the height of the of where we are way in the back. Um, so, you know, we're gonna have to do some landfill landfill, but it's kind of there in that location to, um, you know, for minimum impact. I mean, the the, working with the fire department, we we have to maintain a a 7% slope or 10% slope. So from one line to the other line on that driveway is is the 7% slope. So the driveway is a little bit tricky. Uh, we're gonna have to do some, you know, like I said, some some sort of building up of landscape there and everything, but that's all, that was all approved by the DEQ too. Uh, in this drawing, it's changed a little bit. So that's why we need to go to the the Eagle, I should say, and and get permission for the changes to a permit that's already been granted to us. And then we will go to the fire department to have them approve the driveway as well. Um, and in that respect, the original plan, the driveway was only 12 feet wide and working with the fire department, I know now that they require 16 feet wide, so it's a little bit wider than the original, than what was originally approved, but that was, that's dictated by what the fire department's gonna require.
Okay, thank you. If we have any other questions, we'll come back to you.
Sure.
All right, and just on that note, Cindy, in continuation of my thoughts here. Actually, if we're requested, we're asking, being asked for a, you know, side or front yard setback or side yard, I guess it would be in this case, right?
It is a corner, it has two front yards.
Front yard, sorry, which would which would continue along that whole length. But basically, we're not, we're not, the driveway doesn't really enter into the application's request for this variance, does it?
No.
Should they, should they decide to bring it in off of Vine or or at somewhat later date? That would be a different change for you guys. You'd have to go through this or and and like he just said, there are all the other departments approvals, so. Not so much tied into what's being requested from us, okay? Um, Jim Muir, anything on this?
Um, none at all, thanks.
Zach?
No, everything made sense so far.
No, everything made sense so far.
Uh Ludlow?
Uh you know, it's it's kind of interesting, you look at this topographic map and it really doesn't do the property justice, you 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 walk up Vine Street. Uh and take a look at it, it's a remarkable piece of property. And it seems to me it's gonna take a fair amount of expense and I not not that I know anything specific about this, but. It would seem to be an expensive developmental endeavor, both from the grading standpoint and foundation. And drainage mitigation, so it's it's a very interesting piece of property. It's just walking the property is 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 pretty instructive.
Yeah, it um. It's why it it wasn't a a piece of cake, that's why it's never been built on, let's put it that way, up until now. Okay, uh did? Did we get any from Jim Hunriser, did he show up at all?
Yes, he did, I noted it in the um in the roll call that he joined at seven oh four, so.
Jim, do you have any comments on this, if you're out there?
Sorry, I was a couple of minutes late, I was in the queue.
Alright.
Uh no, no comments.
Okay. Alright. The um then I guess what I'd like to do is proceed into a review of the. The uh standards. And um. Discuss those and see what we can do as far as any finding of. Of our of our presentation here in our discussion. So anybody like to, Zach, you wanna start with this first one?
Sure. Uh that strict compliance with area setbacks, frontage height, bulk or density would not unreasonably prevent the owner from using a property for a permitted purpose. Or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome. Um I think that the topography of the site. Um kinda makes strict compliance with the setbacks. Uh difficult to build, so I think it does meet the standard. I think the nice thing too uh is it sounds like with the reduced footprint. They're going to shorten the side of the house. That is requesting the variance. Um but yeah, I think because you've got. I I think I read fifty percent of the lot. Unbuildable. You know, strict compliance would be make building a home difficult.
Yeah, yeah. I would, yes, I agree with you that the, you know, in the general, the general dunes. Restrictions and the uh and the topography of this. Uh lot being so flat. On the east end and and so high on the west end sure surely makes this thing. A little bit, uh as we use the word unique quite often, but um. I think that that uh really does. Does really attend itself to meeting the standard of number one on this one. Anyone else have any comments on? How they how they think it goes for one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This Jim Buck. Um in one of these four standards, we need to address Mr. Medler's comment that apparently tiny homes are now allowed. Uh in this district, if not others throughout the city, with a minimum of six hundred square feet. And we're allowing a a variance to build a bigger home than, you know, you could put six hundred square feet in there without a without a variance. So somehow we need to address that and it might be here, it might be in uh. Number two, but uh you know what, a tiny home is not a livable. Not a livable home. Uh unless you're a special person.
And it doesn't leave room for a car, does it?
No. So what what I would suggest is perhaps we add a statement in here that. Um although tiny homes of six hundred square feet are allowed. Um such a home.
That's a tough one.
Is is not uh not acceptable to the owners or something like that, um and they've reduced the scale of their home to. The minimum size that they consider to be livable.
Would you, are you? I guess you're thinking a little futuristic, but you're also relating it to the first standard here a little bit, that's what you're.
Yeah, somehow we. Um no, I'm not thinking futuristically, um could we have Cindy about the tiny homes?
Yeah, good, Cindy, you got any comments on tiny homes?
Yes, that um ordinance amendment went through planning commission. I think that the last time you looked at this in two thousand eighteen. You're dressed it in ordinance or standard number one, a house of any size will need some kind of variance from ZBA or DEQ. So you are looking at not um the smallest house you could build, but what was similar in the neighborhood in the area.
Fair enough, too.
Well, in twenty sixteen, we didn't have a tiny home ordinance, did we?
This was twenty eighteen and yes, I believe we had it by then. I put the minutes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear them.
Okay, um. She said there was in eighteen, there was an ordinance, as I believe what she said.
That's that's what I did say, I can check that exact date, but um.
Okay.
It's it might be burdensome for a person to try to live in a six hundred square foot house on a lot of that size.
Cindy or um Bob?
Yeah.
Uh and I'm curious, um there is that development up the street, um and it's Sugar Hill or something like that? Uh those homes are fairly large homes, are they not?
Yes. Well, they're not large, large, but they're like at at least twelve hundred square feet.
Okay.
Crazy.
How about we just did a statement that says the the planned home is consistent with the size and scale of other homes in the area?
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be acceptable. That would be a good, a good reference to to. To have as as part of our finding on this, to make, to reference the the conformity within the area, yes. Alright, how about uh Jim Muir, would you like to read the second to standard on this one?
Sure. That a variance would do substantial justice to the owner as well as to other property owners in the district. Or whether a lesser relaxation would give substantial relief and be more consistent with justice to others. And the comment was that uh would allow the house to be built on flatter land. Reduce encroachment on a critical dune, and I think that implies. That it'll be complimentary to the size of other houses in the area as well.
Yeah. There is um. There is quite a variety of of lots in this area. So to speak, so um. It's not, you know, it's not exactly a cookie cutter type of a lot in the area. Unique into its own self, but you know, there are different situations all all around it, three hundred sixty degrees with the different lots. So it is a um. Yeah, I still, it still goes back to um. You know, to me, it still goes back to the the a lot of the. Slope slope that you were running into on the, I guess it's the north side and the area that that is required to. To meet the standards of the eagle, uh the dunes. Requirements allow and allow you to get into. So. Seem to come back on that one also. You don't get away from that on on this lot, I guess. How about Dick Bond on number three?
That the plight of the owner. Is due to unique circumstances of the property and not to general neighborhood conditions. Well, as what John Ludlow said, as I walked that, that um is a very unique area. And so um giving that relief would uh. Give the um, we gotta keep those critical dunes, alright, always in our mind, so. I think giving that relief would not only give the owner the ability to build that house, but also. Keep in fact, the the dunes behind it.
Yeah. Sure. And then the fourth one, I guess, uh Jim Buck, you wanna read that one?
Explain how the problem is not self-created or based on personal financial circumstances. Uh the hardships placed on this property are defined by Eagle E G L E. And the uniquely shaped property lines and the building setback lines required for a corner lot. And the applicant did not create any of those and it's not sparing expense to build a home on this unique property.
So yeah, it seems to me meet that standard pretty pretty well, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we seem to, yeah, my my notes show that um I guess the. Two, three, four seem to be rather, you know, rather um. Rather, rather eas- easier to say that that it does. It does require a variance and and number one with our discussion that we had. Um with some of the neighboring. Properties and and the densities. And to meet the the compliance, it also with the reference that Jim you were talking about. Seems like the board was in. In more in saying that it would with that comment, it would meet that standard. That's the way you you were presenting it, Jim, so.
That it would meet that standard, yes.
Yeah, right, with with that reference point, so. Would there be um? Any other discussions uh prior to us taking a look at um making some kind of a. Uh direction of a motion to reference, you know, we have to have to meet all all four standards to be. A uh either approval, if it doesn't meet all four standards, it would not meet the approval. And is there a? A feeling that we wanna go forward on here before we, or do we have any more questions if we're in a position to make some kind of a? Proposal with a uh motion?
I have no more questions, uh Bob, at all, that I think all four of them uh meet the standards and um it could be approved.
Okay. Anybody else have any? Concerns or?
I'm satisfied, sir.
Okay.
No questions.
No.
Ludlow?
Nothing.
Is there?
Well, then, Bob, I'll make a a motion. To approve the application for the above named property on. Of one eighty-four Park Street, um granting the variance, a request for the front. Yard setback from Vine Street to be setback from the property line on Vine fifteen. Where twenty-five feet is required for a variance of ten feet.
Support.
Uh Jim Muir, you supported that? Okay. Any uh any questions on the motion that is on the floor at this time from any of the board board members? Okay, then with that said, then Cindy, I would say, suggest we go to a vote.
Okay, just a reminder that since we do have the full board present, the um alternates though. Um happy to participate and deliberate will not be voting. So I'll go ahead and call the the rule, Bond?
Um yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Uh Muir?
Yes.
Zerfas?
Yes.
And Kubashjak?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Okay. Alright, uh so um. At this point in time, we'll. Can say that we've gone ahead and approved the application for one eighty-four bar our park street. And um. I guess the applicant knows what to do from here on out, Cindy, you'll follow up with them as as general needs to be done with anything. Any any questions they might have, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody, thank you for your time.
Okay, that moves us along, um takes us off of. Item number four, new business and moves us on to our meeting on to unfinished business. Which is four forty-three Park Street. Are there are various, there are three various requests for for the application there at four forty-three Park Street. Uh as my little, my little go back was that this first started on the meeting started on June seventeenth. And um we had to have a motion to uh re- reschedule it onto the twenty-second due to. A lack of communication and availability of of internet services. And uh and then on June twenty-second, we continued into the. Of the uh.
You see.
Board. And then we ended up going uh into a motion. From the board. Uh looking for some some more information and requesting that we. Put together some a special meeting with some council support. With questions that we were looking at that were arising from from the uh. Meetings and at that point in time, uh this point in time, I would like to ask Ryan Heiss, the city manager. To maybe provide the listeners and public uh where where that's at. Where the city is at in providing the board, zoning board of appeals, uh this type of a meeting and uh. And support, so Ryan, if you wouldn't mind, go ahead and maybe giving an update as to. Where we're at with this and then we can uh go from there after that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, um and for the benefit of the audience, Ryan Heiss, city manager here. Um and it looks like we have everyone muted now, we had some little feedback there, so. Um good to not hear that anymore. So yeah, like I said, good recap, um you all, the ZBA board. Um we're reviewing your your three items that were in front of your body. Um as the record will reflect, um you made decisions on the first two items. Um and as you came into the item, which was the fence. Um uh you you all uh decide to defer on that and postpone all three decisions. Um and elect to uh direct city council to bring on new legal counsel. Uh which is not really in in your scope. Um however, uh city council did hear you. Um and I think the the attorney uh that was representing the city heard that as well. And they decided to resign from the city. And so now the city is in a position where we are onboarding new legal counsel. In addition to that, we are also onboarding um a planning and zoning consultant, so. You have some options tonight, um so one, um. I, I think you all have enough information in front of you where you could make a ruling, which we, you would have to make a ruling on all three decisions again. So you'd have to go back through one, two, and three. You could also postpone the meeting to a, a, a time date certain, which would not require you to re-advertise the meeting. Or three, once we onboard our, our new staff, our consultants, our legal counsel and new consultant, we could re-advertise the meeting if you're not comfortable with, with making a decision time and date certain and/or tonight. So again, you have three options. Make a ruling tonight if you feel like you have enough information in front of you. Two, we just re- or just postpone the meeting to a time and date certain. Or three, re-advertise once the city is able to onboard new legal counsel and planning and zoning consultant. So, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you. And if you have any more questions, I'll, I'd be happy to address those.
Okay. And before I lose you, I don't, I'm not pressuring you for an exact answer, but my understanding is that you're, you're proceeding the best you guys can to accommodate this if possible for the zoning board. And that one of the findings between our last ma- meeting of the 22nd and this meeting was that we have a, let's say, a deadline of August 6th for a final, a final type of vote. Is that correct, Ryan? Is that what we, we found out?
Yes, that's correct. So yeah, you can have a series of meetings between that date, but yeah, you're ruling what? You have a 45-day time limit since you closed the public hearing at your last meeting, so that, that lands on August 6th.
Okay. Yep, and I appreciate you giving us the, I guess, going through the options that we have as far as in front of us, your kind of one to rehash it. Continue tonight with some type of a, a vote and a, a motions and to continue or complete the applications request and the board and/or to, number two, to postpone and do basically wait for council to be a part of our meetings. Now, we did request, we did provide to the city at their request of the mayor and, and Ryan, a list of questions that the zoning board has that, you know, that we were wanting to have some answers on prior to going forward, which is the, I guess, the reason for that motion. And those, of course, because of this change in council and the need to find new council hasn't happened yet. We're, we're still at bay at that, I know. So we, to the board, we may want to continue that being, we're in our own deliberation still in this meeting. This is where we're picking this meeting up right now. So I guess I'd like to go to the board at this point in time, see if you guys have any questions. There's been, I guess, some, some movement, but not much here. And I'd like to hear some of your opinions as to, you know, the options that we have. And I'm gonna say, before I ask any of your input yet, I want to say that if we continue tonight, you know, and we choose to do that, then that's, then that's one decision. If we do chose, choose to postpone, or meaning we want to continue to have some kind of a special meeting that is allowable, this is, that would be a public meeting, but we have to give 18 hours notice. We may want to take a look at a couple of dates to do that and set something depending on when, well, whenever the city is in a position to provide, as Ryan referenced, either a zoning consultant administration for the answer to some of our questions or legal counsel for that. And of course, they would have to get up to speed. So we would have to, we'd want to do that and then also set our, our meeting that makes sure that it's within the timeframe of the, before the August, on the August 6th or before the August 6th deadline, that would work for all, you know, pretty much board members, city, city members, board members that would be able to handle that meeting depending on all the schedules. So that, bunch of that said, any, anybody out there of the board members want to start with any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Dick Bond.
The questions that we proposed to the city for consultants?
Yeah.
Are those questions that everybody knows? Do we need to reiterate any of those?
Um, we could, we, nothing, nothing being hidden on them. The, I think, I know that some of them were part of our discussion on the July 22nd.
Correct.
Or June, sorry, the June 22nd meeting. And so some of those items are discussion items we had or questions we had. I know one of them was the timeframe as far as the, the deadline for having to make a final decision. So that could be, that could something we, you know, we could go through here amongst us board members tonight.
That's, that's, yeah, that's what I'm referring to. Just want to make sure all of our, all of us know what those are and where we're heading to on that to help make decisions.
Yeah, I think for the public record, that's probably not, you know, a good thing to have on public record. I mean, it's been shared with the, you know, with the the mayor and the, and the city manager, so probably council. So I don't think that's a bad idea that, for us to share that. And, you know, it also may prompt us to decide whether we want to continue tonight with, without some of those answers or postpone and, and reschedule.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Now, I don't have those, so somebody's gonna have to.
I can find them. I don't know. Anybody, Jim or Zach or anybody, you guys got them in front of you?
I do not.
I have those questions, Bob.
You got them? I was gonna, okay, I was gonna look it up. Go ahead if you have it, Zach, if you don't mind. I think there was, I don't know. Forget how many, they're broken out into numbers.
Yeah, uh, the first two, I think are, have been answered. They were about the 45-day period and when that extends to. And I think we have the answer to that, which is August 6th, correct? So even if we postpone, we still have to make a decision before August 6th. Number three, relates to the Michigan zoning enabling act. Is the Z B A authorized or required to review a rule on related issues brought to light by the zoning administrator, the applicant and residents during a review for a variance? Number four, define the Z B A authority to act on issues brought forth by the zoning administrator, the applicant, and the public. Do those make sense to everyone?
I think so. Any comments, you guys? Okay.
Uh, number five, waterfront lots. Uh, this was a point that Jim brought up in the last meeting. Notwithstanding, this is 154.022 general regulations for waterfront lots. Notwithstanding any other provisions of this chapter, all structures on a waterfront lot shall have a setback of 25 feet from the waterfront. Lot line which abuts the street shall be deemed to be the front line, and the two remaining yards shall both be required side yards. Does this constitute an absolute prohibition against dimensional variances for such a structure? That was question five. Uh, six relates to the bathhouse. Does the Z B A have the authority to rule on this case that has been previously ruled upon and upheld by a circuit court? That was, I think, a pretty big one.
Yep.
Uh, the variant, moving on to variance three, there is no questions in variance two, variance three. The applicant has constructed a non-conforming privacy screening structure without first obtaining a variance or a zoning permit for construction? Does the Z B A, so question seven, does the Z B A rule on this variance request as if the structure does not exist and the property was vacant? Uh, question eight, does their requested screen constitute a structure? Question nine, can the Z B A determine if screening or waterfront fencing is the applicable standard for this variance request? So three questions on the fence or screening. Uh, moving on. The electrical meters in their current location and arrangement, can the electrical meters in their current cur- location and arrangement be determined to constitute a self-created public safety hazard and be required to be relocated or rearranged? Number 11, is there in existence a ruling from the city that the requested privacy screen structure is justified by incompatible land use when compared to neighboring property? Uh, number 12, if this ruling exists, is it valid and does it overrule the Z B A finding? Stop me if you guys have any questions or comments.
Just keep going, we're done for good for now.
Yeah, that's good. Keep going, Zach.
Number 13, we, uh, the applicant stated that he possesses a legally enforceable document agreed and approved by the city, allowing the privacy screening structure and prohibiting enforcement of the special land use and zoning regulations. So question 13, we presume this is the land swap agreement. Is there any other such document? Uh, the city refused to provide the land swa- swap agreement and other documents to the Z B A. And when advised, this information was referenced by the applicant isn't, and is considered by the Z B A to be necessary for findings of fact in the case. The Michigan zoning act states the body or officer from whom the appeal is taken shall immediately transmit to the zoning board of appeals all the papers constituting the record upon which the action appealed from was taken. Question 14, is this withholding of the requested information of valid action by city administrators? Question 15, if not, can the additional Z B A requested documents be provided by the city? The land swap agreement has been subsequently provided to the Z B A by a resident who obtained it through the Freedom of Information Act. Sections of the land swap agreement appear invalid and in violation of the Michigan zoning enabling act and local zoning regulations. Question 16, did the signers of the city have appropriate authority to grant the dimensional variance for the privacy screen as contained in the land swap agreement? Question 17, is the land swap agreement valid and enforceable? Uh, and lastly, the applicant stated that the pedestrian traffic from the chain ferry constitutes a significant burden. The exact nature of this burden and its impact on boat docking or other uses of the applicant's property has not been specified. The presidents, the presence of pedestrian tech- traffic for the remaining 97 boat slips in Sagatuck has never hindered nor prevented their successful operation. Question 18, does the president, presence of a pedestrian traffic on neighboring property qualify as a burden to the operation of boat docking in the applicant's property? And last question, does this burden, if it exists, constitute practical difficulty versus zoning compliance for the applicant?
Oh. They have a number of, number of things under number three as, as, as that reference. Not that we didn't have some general questions, of course, on the top, which I guess we did, did answer the 45-day one. And I know that one of the, one of the, one of the concerns was the, the land use regulation, you know, as far as 25-yard setback, structures on the water, you know, shall not have have a setback of 25 feet from the water, all, all structures on water, sorry, lot, shall have a setback of 25 feet from the water. Was, was a big one in general and then which, which could have an effect on all three of those variances along with the other ones. Which they, what's the board's feelings based on, I guess, where we're at, where the city is at and our options that have been presented in front of us?
Mr. Chairman?
Jim Buck, yes?
Um, could we please ask the city manager when they expect to have legal counsel onboarded and available for us? But I don't see that we can choose from those three options without having some idea.
I think that's a, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, yes, we're gonna ask Ryan, but I don't know if Ryan, you know, what Ryan can give us as a definite, but hopefully some kind of a, you know, a timeframe because of our, our limited timeframe. Ryan, are you still there?
I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the question. So the, the mayor and, and mayor pro tem will be talking to interim legal counsel, potential tomorrow. And we do have a letter of engagement that's in, in front of me, but I do want to have that conversation. So it could be as early as the end of this week.
Okay, that's, that's enlightening news. So Jim Buck, I think at least Ryan gave us a little bit of a, a little bit of a light, light at the end of that tunnel on that one. What'd you say?
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Dick.
By the way, Ryan, thank you very much. I know that your job of trying to find legal counsel to step in and try and answer some of our questions is going to be a tricky thing. So even though some of the questions that we have asked, knowing that all structures cannot be within 25 feet from the water's edge. But there are a lot of other things we need to have answered before. And the thing is, all we need to do is turn down one of the four variances and it could be turned out. So throwing that out just as a comment, I would still like to have the other questions answered before I could give an honest opinion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, anybody else feel the same way or differently than what, let's say, Dick's, start with Dick's suggestion that we, we schedule special meeting with council within, here in the next soon, soon time. We, we could set some, we can look at some, like I said, some dates tonight and set some things and, and to try to meet those, which would be a guideline for us and the city, I think. Anyone else have a feeling in that, in that light or differently?
Uh, can I ask Jim? It's Jim Muir.
Yep.
Was our zoning administrator involved in the construction of these questions?
Our, was our zoning administrator involved in creating these questions? That, that's a question, Jim?
Construction of the question.
The construction of the question.
Did we input into them?
No, no input that I know of from, from our zoning administrator.
Why is that?
I think it's, uh, it was, it was a set of questions that, going back through the minutes that were put, uh, we were asked, we were asked by the mayor, uh, I was asked by the mayor to put together some I was asked by the mayor to put together some concerns and what, what it was that the board, why the board felt that they had to have a, a meeting with council. And, um, so those, those were the ones that were pulled from, you know, from the minutes and from the videos. To, to say that those are some of the things that were outlined that felt that need to be at least some direction for finding a fact. Okay. Anybody else? Kim, Kim Balk, Zach?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, just trying to, I guess, gauge the room. You know, from the last meeting, I got the impression that, uh, the variances would have been, we would have, if we had moved to a motion, it would have been to deny or not grant the variance. So I'm just wondering, you know, what would change when we? How important it is to have legal counsel, like is it actually gonna change anyone's motion or vote on a motion? Is it?
I, yeah, I think it's, I think, I think the the, the discussion on the 22nd was that there was, there was a certain amount of questions that we, we just reviewed or, or within reason that were more of a concern of stating our finding of facts, not so much as a thumbs up, thumbs down type of a, of a thing as to where it is that we're saying we see these differences and there were questions that what was in, what was related to their, making sure that it's related to our, our job. To listen to, you know, the applicant, listen to what, what were provided by the zoning administrator, what were provided by the applicant, what is provided by the public? And take a look at those and make sure that our finding of fact is relevant to a decision. And even though we, there were a few things that we felt were already probably going towards a way of not meeting the standards, there was, there were details that finding a fact was not clear. That we felt were, were not answered. And that's most of it fell under the third, the third. I guess the third issue, the third issue, yeah.
All right.
That's where, that's where it seemed to stop in the last meeting. Jim Balk, you got anything on this or?
Well, what, what I would prefer to do, we've come this far and we're gonna have legal counsel soon, let's, let's see this through and get our questions answered. And make sure we've covered the waterfront for this lot here. Um, because there are issues we need clarified because some of the information that we were given seems to conflict with the Michigan zoning enabling act, which says we have to rule on all the issues that come to light as a part of this, and that's, that's one of the questions. I would hate to rule that, that for example, if, if we ruled that the fence should be abated because it's a structure within 25 feet of the water. But we failed to rule if we had the opportunity on the land swap agreement, which permits the fence. If that overrules it and if we didn't rule that that violates the zoning ordinance. I just want to make sure we've got a buttoned up case for the city. That we're on solid legal ground here. And what I would recommend is that we set up special meetings for each of the next three Wednesdays so that we can get this resolved. If we can resolve it at the next meeting after meeting with legal counsel, um, these things might clear up right away. And we could, we could settle it at any point. Uh, but we gotta get the legal counsel onboard, get them up to speed with everything that's happened and, and share with them the entire record, which is extensive. So that we can get rulings that are based on, uh, based on law, they can tell us what law backs it up. Uh, so I would recommend that we have scheduled special meetings for perhaps each of the next three Wednesdays. Which gets us wrapped up the day before the, the deadline, that would wrap us up about the fifth.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking at my calendar here, we're like three weeks. One, two, three. Three weeks, uh, three weeks away from three weeks and a couple of days from the sixth.
Mr. Chair, this is Brian Nice.
Uh huh, go ahead.
Thank you. What I predict is once we onboard our, 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 our new legal counsel is that you'll, you'll find that many of your questions that you have. Uh, perhaps go a little bit out of the, the lane and or scope of the ZBA board. Um, and that's fine, that's, that's the, the kind of guidance that I think you all are seeking. You know, what decisions are in front of you? I think many of the, the questions that are asked tonight. Will probably fall back on city council and or me to resolve and probably won't be in front of the ZBA board. But again, that's the, the guidance that you all need. So I, I wouldn't recommend scheduling a series of, of meetings, I, I would recommend that you allow the city to onboard new legal counsel and onboard our new, our new planning and zoning consultant. Have a meeting, let us brief, uh, the, the new attorney. And then provide some guidance and then we can just go from there. Uh, I wouldn't schedule a series of meetings, Mr. Chair.
Based on that, Ryan, um, we would want to schedule at least a, an ending meeting, wouldn't we? Um, or at least try to get something done before the sixth, fifth, fourth, fifth, somewhere in there.
Yeah, 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 the end zone is the sixth, I'll get six, so I'll, I'll look at Cindy, if you, if you could help. As far as a process standpoint, uh, what needs to happen as far as scheduling and advertising.
But if, but if, what if we, what if we run into, I'm not, I know this is pressure, but can always cancel a meeting, but if we don't have something scheduled. You know, I don't think the board's looking to, let's say, schedule a meeting for August 4th or 5th and, and we meet with council on the second or third. A day or two before.
Correct.
And it doesn't mean we, our schedules are available either, you know, so it's nice for us to have some kind of a goal and uh, the public too, because these are, these are public meetings, these are not closed sessions, right?
Oh, that's correct, yep, everything is gonna be very, very transparent here.
Yeah, so I meant it's, it's, um, I'm trying, I'm trying not to get, I mean, I understand there's a number of changes that has happened since the 22nd and a lot has had, had to happen, still has to. However, we've, we've had nothing happen on our side. Since the 22nd, not, if you know what I mean by that, as opposed to, you guys are moving along, uh, and doing your job and doing the best you can. We're, we're still sitting here at bay and I agree with you, I think a lot of things will get clearer, we're just trying to make sure that we do our job and understand our responsibilities and all considered, um, probably can go pretty fast, but we're not, we're not too comfortable probably with looking at, we get down to the last hour and there's not much, much, it's not even a full hour.
Yeah, no, I agree, um, Mr. Chair, we're moving like a herd of turtles, as I like to say. So Cindy, again, a, a process question, if we have to re-advertise for the ZBA meeting, how much notice do we have to give on, on that? And you're muted. Cindy, you're still muted. And you're still muted. Oh boy. Cindy, oh, there you go. Process question, yeah, moving like a herd of turtles.
If you adjourn to a date specific, we do not have to notice, renotice everything out. If we have to renotice everything out, that will take us well beyond that August 6th date because of the zoning enabling act requires us to publish it in a newspaper 15 days before the meeting. And since our newspaper publishes once a week, it, I need three weeks' notice to be able to get that notice in the paper. And then to notice everybody within 300 feet.
Great, so that's very helpful, that's very helpful, so yeah, time and date certain? I, I mean, I guess just, yeah, just pick a meeting, I, I guess you could, can't, Cindy, another process question. If they scheduled a series of meetings, could they cancel them if need be?
They could, and they could also, um, maybe get a written report to them about answering those questions before the meeting, and I think that's, I think that's what I'm hearing, they want those answers before the meeting.
Right, and I think we're gonna learn about, a lot about what's in their scope and, and what's not, um, as I mentioned earlier.
A meeting is important because sometimes an answer, uh, requires a, a quick question as opposed to playing email ping pong, so to speak. So, um, that, that's what'll move it along quicker. If somebody says, you know, thumbs up, uh, we say, okay, we understand, or here's the next question and then we resolve it, so that's why a meeting is very important.
Yeah, and I think, um, just to add to that, Mr. Chair, uh, I know the city council's gonna be moving towards an in-person meeting at their next council workshop, so I think that will also benefit, um, the ZBA board, um, because we also could meet in person.
I mean, the city council's gonna meet in person.
Correct, but that would also allow the ZBA board to meet in person, um, at their next scheduled meetings possibly.
Okay. Oh, interesting, well, I, I guess, working backwards. If, I'm gonna go back to the board, you guys. Based on what we've just gone through. If our decision with our options tonight is to not continue tonight. And move, and go, and wait for some of these answers, which, which it sounds like the city is, is, uh, helping here to resolve this and get us some comfort levels of our finding of fact, then we would, we'll go ahead that route and I want to hear if the board is in favor of that, that direction and I'm kind of a, I'm gonna go around the table again, I'm gonna start with, I'll just do the, my little circle here, Dick, Dick Font, do you have any comments on that?
Oh, absolutely, um, the first comment is to Ryan, if we knew when the city council was gonna have their meeting. So they could let us know when some type of, uh, legal assistance could be there, we could then schedule a meeting very quick and fast. We have to be in person with that legal person as compared to just having them send us an answer back each one of our questions. Because just like Bob said, there might be a statement and then the next thing that might change our finding of facts to have us make a decision. So I think we need to know when their meeting is so we can get our meeting with the legal counsel.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to respond. Yeah, as, as I mentioned, um, the mayor, well, I've been authorized to go ahead and onboard, um, new legal counsel, so that's gonna very likely happen tomorrow. Um, and I think the, the best route is to, um, go ahead and submit the questions to them and then let them respond and, and push that out to the, the ZBA board. And that will move things along, does that help?
Could, could you also, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
Um, Ryan, could you also submit to them the entire record?
Oh yeah, they're gonna get, as new interim council, they're gonna get our, in, in entire files from the city. Um, we're gonna, they're gonna ship those over from our previous council to our interim council, so they will get the complete record.
Okay, thank you.
So, so Jim, well, Jim Balk, you're up there now, I guess you're, you would, you already said you're in favor of, of continuing this, Dick sounded like he was also.
I'm in favor also, Bob.
Yep.
But I don't want to drag this out, so if there is some way that we can set a date to get into this, knowing that Ryan is bringing someone onboard, I'd like to get this, uh, resolved as soon as possible.
Oh, I'll second that. How about, Jim Muir, any, uh, any input on if you, you feel that it's direction where we're going with the onboarding of council and, and was with council and also the potential meeting with council, our city council, uh, and us. Uh, as proposed is a comfort level with you?
Uh, city council?
Well, it was referenced by Ryan that there could be a, a joint meeting, I believe it was, with ZBA and city council.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, no, I'm sorry, yeah, that was not the case.
Just council. Got it.
Legal counsel.
Legal counsel, sorry, legal counsel and ZBA, okay.
Yeah, that's right, I, I would like the legal counsel to give us some written response to our questions. Prior to us sitting down with him, I think, uh, as Ryan mentioned, there are some things that might be easily resolved by the council. I think we've been really beating our head against the wall on some things and unnecessarily or areas that are not appropriate. And I'd like to get that, that person's as well as the consultant's thoughts on that, so I'd prefer to get something in writing. And if we want to schedule a meeting tonight, that's fine, I don't think we need the next three Wednesdays. Uh, I, I think it's, uh, can be resolved, it seems like everybody's have, has a frame of reference that they want to get this thing resolved. They don't want to rush it through, but I, I think, uh, with a council and with a, uh, some written responses that, that we can tie it up with one meeting.
Okay, good. So thank you, Jim, Zach, uh, view on this situation?
I support what, uh, Jim Muir said, uh, written responses would be helpful, move to a meeting, uh, specific date. And I would be in favor of in-person if that's an option. Be happy not to do another Zoom meeting.
Right. Uh, right, yeah, hopefully we're getting back to that too. Okay, and, uh, just opinion, John Ledlow?
Yeah, I would, um, I, I think either way, I, I like what Zach said earlier, that it'd be nice to get this thing done. On the other hand, uh, having a, the best record possible, uh, I think we're headed either way, making a decision tonight or waiting for, um, council, uh, advice. This thing, we, we've not seen the end of this and we're not gonna see the end of it soon, I don't think, so, um, continuing due diligence is, is certainly, uh, the better approach, I think.
Okay. Uh, Jim Heinrichs, or any thoughts on what you've heard so far and your?
Agree with the due diligence and wondering if we should set the date for the 28th so that we give the uh, Ryan and the town some time to onboard, the people get their questions answered. That would allow a little bit of flexibility on their end to get things moving and scheduled and still give us a week, a couple of days after that, just in case something else comes up.
Yeah, that'd be, okay, that'd be wonderful, okay. I.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I'm agreeing with all of that and I would like to get the written opinion and then have a face-to-face with the attorney rather than just, okay, here's the opinion, that's it. Um, with no chance for follow-up or, uh, questions. And we could have that at the, if we, let's say we scheduled the 28th, um, if we had the written opinion at least a week in advance. We'd have time to review it and have our thoughts together coming into the meeting so we could very quickly go through that with the attorney, any follow-up questions. And, uh, then move into our meeting.
Mr. Chair, this is Ryan.
Uh huh, Ryan.
Um, I think the 28th is a, is a good meeting date, I, I, I can't commit to how quickly the attorney can turn around, uh, the responses to the, the questions that are Uh, to how quickly the attorney can turn around uh the responses to the the questions that are being asked. Um, but I I do respect the the ask of having written responses before the meeting, which. I think we can accomplish, I just can't say that. We can have that a week in advance before the meeting on the twenty eighth. But I do like the the date of the twenty eighth.
Are you saying the twenty eighth as in a final meeting, as not a special meeting with council?
Uh, the twenty eighth as as your next meeting to address the the issues that are in front of the ZBA board. But getting a, getting, getting a, getting, yeah, with legal counsel, uh, yep. Um, and getting a written response, but I just couldn't, could, cannot commit to uh getting that a week in advance of of your meeting since. Since I have no idea what their capacity is at the moment, but we're gonna, we're working fast.
Yeah, what I like about that is it does give us inferior, yeah, no, actuality, another week if we. You know, so we don't have to go back to another uh, you know, public notice or three weeks in the neighborhood. We get it done in the timeframe. Um, so we can, we had to, we've got a few days after that, the following week to get this. Out of our calendar, off the calendar, so to.
Mr. Chair, Cindy has her hand up.
Uh-huh, go ahead, Cindy.
The following week, the week of August second, is the election on August. Three.
Uh-huh.
And there will be no meeting room available all day on the third. And for part of the morning on the fourth. And all of Monday, we'll be setting up the um election equipment.
What was the fourth? Did I, you say about the fourth?
The the fourth in the morning, the cleanup after the election.
I see. So I mean, we could, we could look at the fourth, or possibly the fifth. I think there's a workshop on the fifth.
There's a workshop on the fourth.
Fourth?
And historic district meeting on the fifth.
But the workshop usually ends before our meetings start, right?
Quite often.
Okay, so we could look at the fourth possibly, okay. So I guess what I'm hearing is we, we're thinking of uh looking for the twenty eighth. With with written information prior, prior to that, um, and. And then if if any kind of uh. Well, I don't know that we're gonna get any, any uh live in- information before that. Is that? Ryan, what you were saying about the twenty eighth, that's what you felt?
Yeah, I I just kinda commit to Jim Bach's um comment about getting it a week in advance. I mean, we'll obviously make our best effort, but I can't commit. But we'll ho- hopefully have a written response.
Jim?
Yeah, I I understand, thank you, Ryan.
Okay. Well, okay, so let's um. As as a summary, I guess my my summary is that um. You guys overview is, we're all saying the same thing here now, that we wanna go for the twenty eighth. And that we want to have written, written the answers to our questions prior to that meeting. And with hopes of uh being able to to wrap up our our full decision on the twenty eighth. But we do have a backup timeframe should should something fall short. Is that what everybody's hearing? That wasn't a motion, that was just a review.
Yes, Bob, that's how I see it.
Okay. You, one of you would like to make a motion? I'm asking if anybody wants to make a motion to do that for us, so we can. Wrap up this portion of our meeting for tonight and a continuation.
Mr. Chair, a- as you move in, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Ryan.
Thank, thank you. As as somebody makes the motion, um please make a, also offer a time. Time and date certain, so take a time of day.
For the meeting, you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah, you're right, okay, yeah. Which typically, uh, you know, my, my opinion would be, we would try to keep our our standard seven P M. Meeting time and uh if if, you know, possible for that twenty eighth would be my re- reference on that, I think, for the board. Dick, you were gonna start on that, is that?
Yeah, Bob, yeah, I'll make a motion, so a- and if anybody else wants to. Clean it up a little bit more for me, they can. But I'd like to make a motion that we meet on July twenty eighth. At one of our meetings to meet um with council. To go over the questions that we have submitted to um the the city council. And try to get at least as soon as possible before the twenty eighth answers to our questions. So, Ryan, like I said, if we had them a week before, fine. If not, I would make a motion. To get those to us as soon as possible, and if uh. That, I I think that's what the motion has to be at this time.
Did you put the time in there?
Seven o'clock, we, I think that's what you, Cindy, is that fine, seven o'clock? Okay.
Before I ask for a second, Cindy, is that, is that uh twenty eighth uh a calendar, city calendar doable thing?
Yes.
It is, be it, be it live or Zoom, either way, right? I mean, just, yes, okay, so that's a a clear city calendar date.
And and Bob, this should be live, not Zoom.
Well, they're all, they would all, yeah, we should try to make it in person, yes, as as opposed to Zoom live, but in person live. Yes, uh, okay. Is there a second uh uh from the board on that motion that's on it?
Jim Bach, I'll second.
Jim Bach, second sit. I know we beat it to death, but my job is to ask if there's any more questions before we. And as to the way the motion has been presented. Okay, then at that point, I would ask uh Cindy if you would uh proceed to a vote?
Yes, uh, I can do that, and just as a point of order, we're not making a decision on any application, so our alternates can vote. Font?
Yes.
Bach?
Yes.
Ludlow?
Yes. You know?
Back to my other page here. Um, Muir?
Yes.
Heinrichs?
Yes.
Zerpus?
Yes.
Babashek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion's carrying. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Thanks for.
Mr. Chairman, this Jim, Jim Bach, just, just a point of, to help me understand. If we have a live meeting in City Hall, is it also Zoom so that people can tune in from wherever they happen to be?
Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead, Ryan, you can be, I can't answer that.
Nor can I. Uh, the the hope is that we would, we will be able to um at least livestream the meeting. Uh, but that doesn't mean public participation in in those meetings, so um there's not a solid answer on that.
Yeah, that makes, old, old technology and new technology, and are they a blend, right?
Yes, exactly right.
We've got more people online here than I've ever seen in a meeting, and I'm sure these people wanna see the, the uh. See this thing through as well. Thank you.
Yeah, a- at a minimum, Mr. Chair, I think that people will be able to um um watch. But I don't know that they will be able to participate. That's a separate question.
Okay, okay, all right, that makes sense. Um, then that moves us along uh in our meetings to um. I guess, now Cindy, on our last meeting, um when we, when we did a continuation, um we. We actually, uh, when it got to number six for communications, we postponed communi- communications and public comments. Basically, we're still in deliberation. Is that still the same on this agenda?
I think you have to, under the Open Meetings Act, allow for the public to comment, and we have one new communication. That was in your packet.
Okay.
Um, and other communications like trainings or other issues, I don't have any other communications.
Okay, so um.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Um, could we have Cindy to tell us who the new communication is from? The the packet is uh big.
Two hundred and ten pages, yeah. I've been asking her to that because I was, wasn't sure where to find it in there.
So that I know what I'm looking for.
Cindy, you get that?
Um.
You're looking.
Just the page number.
Yeah, I still have to find the page number. It is on page forty eight. And it's up on your screen as well.
I would read it, but it's a little, anybody can you?
I can read it.
Would you read it, please? Mine's just a little far away and small.
It's to the zoning board of appeals. This note is in reference to the petition from Dune Ridge, now V H H. To ZBA applying for a permit to build a four-foot fence next to Casa Loma property. Why do they keep saying next to coast Casa Loma? We want to notate and make clear that V H H cannot, will not be building it next to Casa Loma. Next to Casa Loma is Lot twenty five. This lot belongs to Alcox, Proca Peaks, and Culls. Please include this note in the packet sent to ZBA and make it part of record. Best regards, Bob and Lloyd of Call.
Okay, good.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you for for uh letting us know that, that that was a new communication.
Cindy, is that, so is that an easement that's right there for them?
Well, the proposed fence is not next to Casa Loma, so I, the the. The the proposed fence, I think they're talking about the four-foot fence, isn't anywhere near Casa Loma.
Okay.
Okay, and then um, so, and then. So we did add, again, under communications, we just had, we added that because it was new. Um, and then, at this point, we're still in deliberation. We don't really go back to public comments, which are usually after deliberation, correct?
Well, I think at any public meeting, under the Open Meetings Act, when. At the beginning or the end of the meeting, you have to allow for public comments, so. And that doesn't be necessarily um in relationship to this request. It could be about anything that.
Yes, yes, it can be about the mosquito outbreak.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so uh, Chairman, at this point in time, I would like, I will. Uh, open to anyone that wants to raise their hand and make a, any type of a comment, again, as Cindy referenced. Just now that it can be in reference to any, anything goes on our agenda tonight. We have, we had one eighty-four Park Street, four forty-three, uh, or something other than that that they. Um, feel is more related to the zoning board of appeals, uh, not so much to. City council or something like that, as long as it relates to our agenda here tonight, mostly. Uh, we would open that up for any comments.
Limit of comment, Bob?
Uh, I believe it's five, three minutes, is it?
Yes.
Cindy, three minutes, yeah.
Thank you.
Any hands?
I see Kyle Kwinsky.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Kyle.
Hi there, I'm one of the attorneys for Dune Ridge. Thanks for uh letting me speak tonight. Um, I just wanted to say, I I'm very interested to hear, um, July twenty eighth. How the reasoning that was applied to one eighty-four Park Street tonight. Doesn't apply equally to Dune Ridge. Um, the standards that I heard applied tonight. For one eighty-four Park Street are exactly what Dune Ridge said in its application, and were discussed. Much differently at prior meetings. For example, the applicant for one eighty-four Park Street wanted to build a house. And the focus on factor one was simply whether he could do his house, one permitted use or not. And it, and the conclusion was, because fifty percent of the, fifty percent was unbuildable in the slope. That that would have been um strict compliance would have unreasonably prevented him. And here in Dune Ridge, there's no uh doubt that it's a hundred percent unbuildable for a permitted use. So that that, that probably equally is, that has to weigh in favor of Dune Ridge, I would suspect. Um, and similarly, the focus on factors two through four were also the fact that the property was mostly unbuildable. Due to topography and setbacks, and that's exactly the case here. That's what Dune Ridge has been contending, and and I do. Um, think that many different reasons that were off base were given in prior meetings, or suggested at least. I know it's not a final decision yet, but. Um, I look forward to hearing how the same reasoning that was applied tonight to a totally different property owner. Um, applies to Dune Ridge. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Kyle. That's why we have those standards and and we review them on each case, individual case, by case basis, so thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, this is Jane Underwood. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, uh-huh.
Yes, okay, Jane Underwood, city of Sagatuck, Alligan County, state of Michigan, United States of America. Longtime resident in the area, and again, I am very concerned about the fence. I have seen several very near misses, people coming off the ferry. It is a danger. I fear when I hear an ambulance. That there's going to be someone who has been hurt there, and the people who have allowed this fence to remain. Are going to feel very sad about this. Having been a teacher, I'm very concerned about children. They come off the ferry, they're excited, they're going to the beach. They're going to Mount Bald Head. When is the city going to get rid of this fence? Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else with the, their hand up, Cindy?
I am not seeing anyone.
All right. If there's no other comments, public comments, uh, we, we do it down to item eight, which is our ZBA comments. Any uh, any ZBA members' comments tonight, as far as uh. Any other things, could be. Future meetings, any other things on the agenda coming up, Cindy, beyond what we got going here?
I have just one comment. I wanna tell Ryan, thank you very, very much for uh stepping up and doing the work you have to do. And we really appreciate it. So we're looking forward to um some of the new council to help uh. Help us out in our meetings and our questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick, for recognizing that. All right, well, anyone else?
Yes, yes, sir, I do.
Jim?
Jim Bach, um. When I presented the motion that we wanted independent competent counsel. I was in no way inferring incompetence on Mr. Slugger. Uh, I was asking to have competent counsel, um, not just the first counsel available, but. Someone who specializes in municipal law and land use and riparian rights, because all of those come into this, so. If Mr. Slugger took my comment negatively towards him, it was not intended that way, and I apologize if he took it that way.
Okay, yeah, good point. All right, anyone, we're. That should wrap us up, you guys. Um, I will call adjournment then at uh eight forty-seven, Cindy. And thanks, everyone, for.
We need, we need a motion and a roll call.
Oh, we do, that's right.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
You darn vote.
A motion to adjourn?
I'll second that motion. I'll second that motion. And then we need a vote, right, Cindy?
Correct. Bont?
Yes.
Bauck?
Yes.
Kubashek?
Yes.
Ludlow?
Yes.
Muir?
Yes.
Heinrichs?
Yes.
Zerpus?
Zach out there?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Zach. All right. That does conclude it then, at 8:48. Thanks, everyone.
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your, all your time and input. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, you. Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks.